Welcome to tonight's study session, June 2, 2025. Good evening and welcome to the Westminster City Council Study Session of June 2, 2025. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your participation and would like to remind everyone that our meetings follow the rules of decorum which are posted in the chamber doors. These rules apply during meetings, breaks, and transitions. We ask all attendees to remain respectful, refrain from disruptions, and avoid any threatening or intimidating behavior. No audible expressions of support or opposition are allowed. Signs and placards are prohibited, and all guests must stay seated in designated areas ensuring aisles and doorways are clear. Thank you. Council reports, Councillor Hattie?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this as an opportunity to bring up what happened in Boulder yesterday with our Jewish community. And just, it was horrific. And it's always hard to find words to adequately express how sad these events are. And I'm sure that I speak for everyone when I say that if there's anyone in our community that is hurting because of this, we're here for you.
Counselor Camino? Thank you. I have a really long report, so bear with me. So, thank you, Councillor Hattie. I was going to give similar both support and condolences to our community. I am also really horrified and sending out love and support to our folks who might feel like they don't have any, so please reach out. We're here for you if we can be. I actually want to bring up, there was two hate crimes that happened yesterday, which was really shocking, the one close to our home here in Boulder, and then there was one of someone in Jonathan Joss in media who is gay, and he was murdered out in cold blood, and that was really horrific. So I was really shocked to read one after another, and I bring it up because media hasn't really covered that, and it's very upsetting. I'm just going to go through the many things we did over the last two weeks. Shared in Green deconstruction, that was really well attended, and so I give big congratulations to staff and of course, our mayor, who, thank you for your speech at that event. I want to call out the National Public Works Week barbecue. I went there, it was amazing, it was so much fun to be there with our folks and facilities and celebrate their talent. We have some of the most impressive folks on our staff in the region, in the Denver metro area, and I think folks should know that and celebrate that. And I'll call out that we have the ACE Conference coming up, which is the American... maybe you can hold on, I had it, and now I don't remember. Hold on, I have it. It's coming up in June, later, and I think it's the 15th and 16th, and it's the American Waterworks Association. It's an annual conference, and I just bring it up because I'm going to try to be there myself. It's not, I think it's like 35 bucks to attend, it's not that much, and our staff, several of our folks in our facilities are going to be there competing against teams in Denver and against teams across the Front Range for different competitions, like how fast you can put together a fire hydrant. And apparently, we have some of the quickest folks, and we're expected to win, so I don't want to call out too early, but I'm going to try to be there because I think our teams are some of the coolest. Those are the neatest jobs we have, and they deserve all of our support. So try to be there at the ACE Conference if you can. And I had my coffee last Saturday, that went really well. I attended the Environmental Advisory Board meeting. I don't have... Oh, we have Bike to Work Day coming up, June 25, and that's an update from both Dr. Cog and the Environmental Board. Trying to remember any other big things that came from that. They are still planning their quarterly regional summits, and so those have been ongoing, and we just had one in Longmont, and that was really successful, so that was good news there. I also attended the Opening Your Business Series, and so thank you to our economic development team for sending that my way. I wanted to sit on it, I believe Councillor Ireland was sitting on those with me. And I just wanted to attend to learn what it is that we provide for businesses, because it's really, I love that we provide businesses the opportunity to learn and give them ahead of time the information that they need to succeed. So I say that just to advertise the fact that we do provide these trainings, and if you are opening a business, please call our city first. We are here for you, and we will do everything we can to make sure that you're successful. Of course, with everyone else here, or most folks here, I attended the four-hour Jeffco Forum on Homelessness, and I just want to call that out to say thank you to Jefferson County for addressing this issue head-on. We don't have any answers to the community at large that's listening yet, but the fact is that we are, as a region, finally coming together to possibly collaborate on some real solutions, which I find really exciting. I had some stakeholders reach out to provide me a... well, a few folks, I believe, were invited, but there was a Bus Rapid Transit Tour, and so these were organizations that are pro pedestrian, pro bike access. And so we met at Westminster Station, we took the route that the BRT would take all the way down federal, and then we took a look at some of the lanes and what that would look for the BRT. And so I just want to say it was really impressive for me to meet folks that are so engaged and passionate about this access, that they would take three hours out of their day to meet with me, explain their concerns, explain the access they want to see, and make sure that we represent for them, especially on Dr. Cog, what they want to see. They do want to see federal have a bus-only lane, there's areas that cannot accommodate currently in the plan, a bus-only lane, because it goes down to two lanes. I see the feasibility of that somewhat challenging, but I just want to say that I'm really grateful for the opportunity to meet with folks, and I promise to express their concerns wherever I can. I did the tour of McMurty's and Odontics with Mayor and Councillor Ireland. That was really interesting. I've always wanted to take a look at that property, and it's kind of a unique situation, and I have a feeling that we're going to come back around to that sometime soon. So got to learn a little bit more about that property. And then I did have a question from someone about, I'm just going to bring it up here, the city, I think we used to offer an academy on city administration, or city, just like our fire and police academies, I believe that we had a...
Civic academy.
Civic, thank you. And I've heard it a couple other times, and I just have not attended it, and so I'm just wondering where that is, maybe we can follow up, and if we're ever going to do that again. There was...
Yeah. This is Abby Fitch, City Clerk. We will offer it again. It's been kind of on hiatus because the last academy we ran, participation, the participation dipped very low, so it needs a refresh, so we are working on it. It will be brought back sometime in the future.
Amazing, that's exciting. Okay, thank you. Glad we could get an answer right away. Okay, I'm going to try to run through Dr. Cog updates really quick. I can put this in an email, I meant to and haven't yet. We approved the budget overall in May for next year. The building decarbonization grant doubled our budget, which is exciting, it went from 58 to 103 million. We have a tip set aside that increased this year, and due to inflation, et cetera, and the budget expanding, they decided not to increase membership contributions, so that's a flat rate. And so that's all good news. The decarb grant, the dispersment will occur over the next four years, and it will be, depending on the city, anywhere between 2 million to 50K. Because of the size of our city, we're at 1.2 million, so that's really exciting. We need to figure out what's going to happen with that money, and I realize planning has got that all taken care of. We did end up amending tip to align with the 2050 Regional Transportation Plan, and that was just aligning the dates, that wasn't anything else. We had a freight plan update, which was just information only, really, just looking at regional freight plans. And then again, June 25 is Bike to Work Day. That's me, thanks.
Counselor Ireland? As Councillor Camino has mentioned, I went to the, or watched it online, Open Your Business, it was the last of the three series I was able to attend. SCBC, Shelley Wood was representative, she was the instructor. She said that anyone that has any issues with their business can reach out to her, it's free of charge, so that was, it's great resource, I thought. I went to the candidate info session, there wasn't too many there, but the guardians of the dog park talked to me afterward, and they're very concerned about $54,543 spent for public engagement for the dog park. They want to know what that's about, if we're going back to square one with surveys. So I want to answer on that myself. There's 29,000 of it, it's for a consultant fee, and then they gave me all the rundown of the management plan that was up to 210,000. So they basically want the park left the way it is, with some trash cans. I don't know exactly what we're planning to spend more money on it, but I want to know the plan and why we're spending so much money on it. I went to the Jefferson County Forum on Homelessness, we had to decide what we were going to do for next year for the cold weather. I don't know what exactly happened because I had to leave early, but there was five scenarios to choose from, and we kind of told our staff to advise. I went to the Odonics Downtown Property, which was interesting to me, because I went to Ireland, and then I went to Rome and Florence, and Florence had a new downtown. And I stayed in a hotel there, and I took the train to Florence. But their trains run every 20 minutes, they have stops every mile, they have the residential on top, the businesses on the bottom. But what they do have that we do not have is a mall. They have a mall adjacent to the new downtown, with underground, free parking, a grocery store, Apple Store, all kinds of specialty stores, a big electronics store, and there were lots of people in there, and a food court. So I thought that was interesting, it's something to look at, because we really need the sales tax to generate more money for the new downtown. Also, I noticed that a lot of the, on the bottom, retail was offices, there wasn't much shops, there wasn't much food, there was a lot of them were empty, which is concerning. Their transit center was, transit was wonderful, and the mall was wonderful, and the parking there was great. So I learned a lot from my trip that we can use. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Counselor Doma? I don't have any reports, but I am curious on the dog park. I thought part of the plan was to look at parking, not just for the folks that are attending, but just to accommodate the issues that we had in the neighborhood. So I thought that was kind of always part of the plan, was to address that as part of leaving the dog park as a dog park, so...
And they do have some good answers to the guardians for the parking.
My understanding was that was some of the money that we were spending in that council direction, so I would be curious to get a report on that as well.
Member Tim? I'll third that, because I know that was sensitivity for the neighborhood. I also was going to speak to just what happened in Boulder and just send out condolences, but also compassion to our whole community, and we really, you know, just answering violence with violence is not, it is not something where I think humanity needs to go, and I'm hoping that our Westminster residents feel that way, and that we can have a safe community in a place where we can go to our events, so many events that we're going to be having over the summer with. So I also, over the past few weeks, have been probably in more cities than Westminster than in Westminster, like you have been kind of traveling around. The interesting things that I would say, just on your point about transit, I got to go visit Portland over Memorial Day weekend, and I used to live out in this new urbanist neighborhood called Wrenco Station, very similar to Bradburn, but with transit. And seeing it 20-plus years later, as it has filled in with the transit and the amount of retail that's been able to build off of all the residential, it just gives me a lot of hope for, you know, seeing what will happen in the downtown area especially, and any other, you know, Westminster Station. It just takes years and years for these things to happen. Obviously, it takes the transit, and the, you know, having the Front Range Passenger Rail, the Joint Service, will hopefully help create that additional opportunity for us. On that note, with Front Range Passenger Rail, I just want to make sure that folks are clear on the difference between what Front Range Passenger Rail District is supposed to provide and the Joint Service. The Joint Service is through the state, and it's the governor's office in conjunction with CDOT and RTD, and that will be provided, even if Front Range Passenger Rail didn't even exist. And so that Joint Service will hopefully start in 2029, it will have two or three trains, you know, round trips a day, and that will hopefully set the ridership and the opportunity for getting more funding for Front Range Passenger Rail. But that whole Front Range Passenger Rail District is all the way down to Pueblo and even Trinidad, and even further south, up to Fort Collins. And that, again, the district, the district isn't really funded heavily. It is, it would, it's a small little functioning group of, you know, a small staff, and they run this board, and hopefully the board will be able to go out for a ballot to be able to fund the full Front Range Passenger Rail line, that whole build-out of it. But it is, the funding is just, for Joint Service is separate. It doesn't require going for a ballot. So at some point in the next few years, Front Range Passenger Rail Board will want to go for a ballot measure, because that will really pay for all of the infrastructure for the full line. So I just, simply have questions about it, because I think it's confusing, and it took me a minute to...
Well, here's an issue I had getting home. When I got to the airport, the B-line, or is the B-line that goes to downtown from the airport, was not running. It was absolute chaos.
That's A-line.
A-line. And it was out since, for five days. We have a problem with our infrastructure to run these trains if this is what people are experiencing. They put all people on buses, but the buses were just, you know, standing room only, it was crazy. So we have a lot of work to do to do mass transit in this state, really. It's nothing like Europe. And three times a day, I don't think three times a day is going to cut it either, because people aren't going to wait out there all day.
Right, it is more of a commuter train to start, it's not sort of a train to hop on to go downtown, just to go shopping or something, but hopefully, it'll be, you know, it'll grow to 10.
It's constantly on time, because people can't...
Yeah, yeah.
I know people that took Ubers, but it was $150 to take an Uber from the airport.
Why not? Yeah, when I got back, whoo.
So we took the train to wagon road and sat out there until midnight and took an Uber home, and that was $10 versus 150, but still, the buses were well-used that night.
That's good. And then one last thing, I did participate in the Urban Land Institute tab, which is a technical advisory panel down in Littleton, and I love doing these because I learn things from other communities. One of my takeaways was actually, they are, they have an inclusionary housing ordinance that is, requires 5% of the units, of new market rate units, to be affordable, and it's actually, and they've priced it at a point where people, the per-unit cost is just kind of too high to pay, and so they actually just provide them, and they've been able to generate over 100 units, and they've also pulled in fees. You know, to date, it's like one and a half million that they have with the approved projects, up to 5 million. So it's just a small amount, that's not, I think, unachievable for developers, and so that was my takeaway. I know, you know, we'll be developing, you know, continue to develop our affordable housing approaches, but I don't think you have to do something huge in order to make a difference in a community, so...
What town is that?
Littleton. I saw talking.
Oh, anytime we have two weeks in between, we can go forever. Had a NADA meeting, walked with St. Anthony, looking for a new community gardens spot, and I wrote you that we did find one, and so they're able to take most everything that they have currently and will be prepping the land and being able to move everything over there. I was able to give them the history, because I think I might be one of the only ones that have been there since the start of it, so I explained to them why we need the archway that has Sister Pat Hayden's Community Gardens on it, and there's another piece that we had community make tiles for all four seasons of the year. I said, "You want to make sure that doesn't just go down with the parking lot," because that's what they're doing with the space that's there now. So we found a good space, it's St. Anthony's, they're hoping the city will approve it and approve their parking lot, and I told them, "They need to go up with their parking, because they're running out of space, and they need to go up." And the gentleman that did the tour with me for the four areas for the site for the community garden said, "Oh, bless you," because he keeps telling Constance they need to go up and not out. So anyway, that was good, and I was glad.
Has the Parks and, has the Parking Board received the mayor's email summary of what happened? Because they were going to send a letter?
I included Eric on it.
Okay. I'm curious if that letter was sent, the letter was like a, "Don't do this" thing, so this may change their mind. So this may change their mind if they know that.
I told him that our Parks and Rec had questions and stuff. So that's the reason he was just telling me everything that's there they think they can use. And I told him the first thing they need to get rid of is all of those horrible five foot thistles. And he was laughing and I said, I'm not laughing because those are ugly things. City manager and I did proclamation in house for economic development, a couple of the areas. The Jeffco meeting with the forum was good, touring the property in downtown. And then last night, as soon as I heard what had happened in Boulder, I reached out to Rabbi Benji. They were having a Shabbat celebration at the Shabbat house. And he wanted to say thank you to the, I didn't know if the police chief is here. No, anyway, let them know that they appreciated being able, they appreciated being able to celebrate. They went on with their celebration. I said, good. And they were together as a unit. And they said you all were there to make them feel a little bit safer. So thank you.
You bet. We stopped by last night and then we also reached out to both congregations today to make sure that there wasn't any other celebrations that we needed to be aware of and let them know that we were watching.
Perfect. So thank you. And then yesterday, while we, well, whatever day we went to visit the dental property, I asked if the townhomes on 92nd ever had an open house. And Lindsay said, we'll find out. And so she emailed us. So I went yesterday and the great news is all but three are sold. And they're 550. I think that's for the three bedroom. I don't know how much a two bedroom is. And they're very nice. So. I was thankful. Is Lindsay here?
Yes, right back.
You're way back there. So thanks. That was fun.
I had one thing I did want to bring up that I forgot to mention. So I had sent an email and you had responded, City Manager, about the totem poles. And because that, I mean, is still kind of a big thing. So I thought about pushing the information out, but I think it would be better if the city maybe pushes that out on our social media as well as Nextdoor. There's a lot of people who are pretty upset by the pictures that were up there. But I think having context around what the plan moving forward would probably do well with the community. So if we could have our teams share, you know, where we're at with that, I think it would be a good, good thing.
Do you have a report?
I do have a brief report this evening, Mayor. If I just have my very first slide, that one. Regarding Westminster Hill's open space, I will get an update to City Council based on tonight's questions and discussions. So I'll give an update as to where we are in the process and the scope of work that's been done and and ahead of us. I don't have a slide on last Thursday. Mayor and much of City Council and me and key staff participated in the Jefferson County Homelessness Forum. Right here, we hosted that at our recently renovated, newly renovated Westview Recreation Center. It went really well. It was a discussion and an input session. We expect a report out from Jefferson County staff this Thursday morning at the quarterly Board of Commissioners and municipal mayors and managers meeting. And after that report out, I'll bring a report back to City Council as to that, those, that information and the next steps for City Council. So I want to make clear to our public that that there's no decision made with respect to homelessness that doesn't happen here in this room with City Council. So I just wanted to be clear on that. But as Councilor Carmelia said, it was a really good session. A lot of, a lot of ground was covered. And the conclusion was, in general terms, to take a regional approach within all of Jefferson County, which is very refreshing for us because we are very much out in front with our efforts. And and the county sees that and so do our partner cities. So I'll bring more back once we get a report out from the county staff on that one. Okay, next slide, please. By way of update, this one is an important one. Westminster, of course, as City Council knows, has joined the Front Range Communities to protect our Home Rule Charter provisions. And on May 19th, we joined with five other cities in a lawsuit against the state of Colorado. And that lawsuit challenges the constitutionality of two laws that were created by two different House bills because they, in the city's views, infringe on constitutional rights as a home rule jurisdiction. And that home rule jurisdiction sets out how the cities plan, grow and develop our communities for our residents. So I will continue to provide updates on this. It's now public and anyone that wishes to receive updates can go directly to westy.news. And that's where we'll post updates as they arise on this, on this lawsuit. The five cities I should list, I think I have those Aurora, Arvada, Glendale, Greenwood Village and Lafayette at this point, as well as Westminster. Next slide, please. This is an important update for all of our Parks, Rec and Libraries users. RecTrack is back online. I don't know if everybody knows, but the city's cybersecurity team detected over 50,000 fraudulent credit card transaction attempts through RecTrack. This is the, this is the system that governs all of our payments for services and Parks, Rec and Libraries. So we stopped, we blocked the system from working and worked quickly to put a patch, a security patch in place, which we have put in place. And the system was back up online today. So I want to reach out and thank the city's cybersecurity team and our information technology department for working very, very fast. We avoided all attempts fraudulent transactions and were able to get a patch in place that allowed us to get that back online earlier than they thought. We were looking at the end of the week and it's now back online again. Next slide, please. This is another important city update. This is the fifth annual Westminster-Arvada Police Team Academy that's underway this week. So that started today. And this is a joint effort between the two police departments. The program offers both Arvada and Westminster High School students an exciting week of direct contact with police instructors through lectures, hands-on experience and demonstration. And for those students who are hearing this tonight or following from some of their co-students, this is also going to happen next year. So if you missed out this year, please reach out to your school resource officer at your school and you can sign up and be part of this. This is last year's picture, I believe. You can be part of the, this academy for next year. Next slide, please. On tonight's agenda, we have four items, two of them are information only. The first item is the Spanish language sign template for public hearings for development projects. So you recall, this came to City Council some time ago and we received some public comment and input. And Council directed that this get retooled. So this is the retool and it's a, it's included in the packet for this evening. Also included tonight is the two-year water and sewer utility cost of service study update. So no action tonight on that one. It's really to keep City Council apprised that the work is now underway to review this. And this is an important piece of work. It's a long, it's a long burn. It's a lot of looking at our own utility, how we operate everything from our main brakes, our capital replacement program. And so the work is very intensive. It's Westminster focused and it effectively determines what we're spending our money on in that utility and how we're spending it. So I'll keep updates coming to City Council as that work progresses. But it is a two-year project that's now underway. Tonight, we have two items under presentation and City Council direction. The first is the Budget 2026 Workshop. So this is, we're going to be coming before you next up to talk about next steps on the budget. And then following that, we will review the strategic plan policy objective update. So this is a follow-up to our workshop. And what we are intending to do tonight is walk through each change to the, that you directed at that workshop and confirm that City Council's direction. And then we'll move through that until we get to the final point. Aaron Ferter will present this. There are three items that individual members of council have asked to be addressed tonight, different than the wording that was in the draft. And so we'll make sure that we take, take time to go through each of those three changes and any other ones that you want to discuss and review tonight. And we'll get Council direction. And then we can go ahead and finalize the plan and get it out to our community. Next slide, please. This week is a busy week. On Wednesday, June 4th, we have a special permit and license board meeting and that starts at 6:00 PM in City Council chambers. We also have this week a historic landmark board meeting. That's a public hearing and that starts at 7:00 PM here at City Hall at the Colorado River Room. That's downstairs. On Thursday, June 5th, the MAC Open House and Pickleball Court grand opening. And that's from 4:30 to 6:30 PM at the MAC. So some exciting changes at the MAC. And please, the community is welcome to attend this. It is a very exciting refresh and overhaul of that part of the MAC. On Friday, June 6th, it's a summer block party that starts at 6:30 and runs to 8:30 at Russell Park honoring firefighters. And then on Saturday, June 7th, another car seat clinic. And that's at 8:30 in the morning, runs through till noon, Fire Station 2. And our fire chief tells me that we try and do these every other week. They're always at Fire Station 2. So if you missed, missed the last one, you can go to this one. And if you missed this one, please, we'll, please track us and we'll announce the next one before, before you miss that one. Next slide, please. At our next meeting of City Council, that's right here, next Monday, June 9th. That's a regular City Council meeting. There will be three presentations, a proclamation designated June as Pride Month, a proclamation designating June as Immigrant Heritage Month, and a proclamation designating Juneteenth. For information only that night, we will have two reports, police department red light and speed camera update. So this will follow discussions in the past with City Council and our chief will provide an update on our efforts with respect to red light and speed camera enforcement. And in addition, Westminster Boulevard fence replacement project from 92nd Avenue to 95th Avenue. So that's an update. That's a very significant undertaking with that part of our community. So I'm providing an update on that project.
Is it on the west side?
Yes.
Because the east side's been done.
Yep. The east side was handled privately. The west side has a whole unique set of circumstances around it, one of which being significant vehicle strikes from that intersection. And so the city is, is going to be trying something new and different there. And we'll bring that into you to give you an update. On consent that night will also be 11 items for consent, consideration by City Council and one public hearing, which is the consideration of an official development plan for Uplands filing for Block 1, P A D 1. Next slide, please. So this is what I've alluded to, a couple of meetings in a row. So happy to unveil a new contact slide. And this will, I'll include it each week at my report. Very excited to promote and support our residents' access to access Westminster, a completely overhauled system. We're getting grid reviews. We're also getting some positive suggestions from community members as to how to make this even better. That's why it really makes sense for folks to use this because it helps us improve it and tweak it. So you can get that at westminsterco.gov/AccessWestminster and download the free app, which works great because it's location-based. And that helps report things from, from out there in the city. So potholes, sidewalk challenges, litter, graffiti, you can report all those things through this app. You can also use our police app for graffiti, which is a very, a very effective app. And I do also want to put out there the city's phone number, 303-658-2400. And that's staffed by someone who will be able to help answer any question that you may have regarding a city service or a challenge that you have. As always, our website is westminsterco.gov. And we have four social media points of contact, Facebook, Instagram, X and Nextdoor. That's my last slide.
If people had access, which looks different than that access, do they need to go in and get the new access?
Yes, get the new access. So I would go, go to that website location, westminsterco.gov/AccessWestminster, get access to the new system. It has been completely overhauled based on a lot of community input. And then if you have a personal handheld device, get the app because it's really, really easy to get and easy to use.
And if that's, that's what I'm wondering, if people aren't changing because they're still having trouble with it.
Yes, good point there. If people are still having trouble with it, recommend just deleting the old one and getting the new one. And my communications lead is nodding from the other room. So. Yeah, spot on.
Any questions? Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Manager Andrews, for that report. One, just a shout out to IT. That's awesome. They were able to circumvent the RecTrack issue. Just a question on the sign template update. Are we saying that the English and Spanish signs would be posted side by side on the property? Okay.
Yep.
I was just trying to make sure it wasn't all trying to be crammed on a one, so.
Well, McConnell Training Manager, yes. The original design that we put together, combined them on one side, now there'll be two.
Okay.
Side by side.
Okay. Better than not having, or as long as it's legible. And I did, I did just have a suggestion around the Home Rule lawsuit. I know that we've all probably heard concerns from the community regarding where we stand on housing and provision of affordable housing and our contributions to the region. And I know in some of our conversations, Manager Andrews, you know, we've talked a little bit about, can we get some numbers about, well, how much have we absorbed in terms of new housing? And how much affordable housing have we sponsored and achieved over the past, you know, five, 10 years? And if we could put some of that out on the website where I know we have the news info, but I think so that people understand that we're not just being obstinate and sitting on our hands, that we've been doing a lot of good work. And I'd love for people to know what that looks like.
Councilor Carmelia.
Thank you. That's an excellent suggestion. I was also going to ask about the signs, so we're good there. I just had a question. After the MAC grand opening of pickleball, how many pickleball courts do we now have in the city?
Sounds like a riddle.
Double check. I think the answer is 12.
12? Okay, that's amazing. And I just want to say that all last year, we were plagued with requests for pickleball. And I just want folks to know that we have maybe 12 pickleball courts. And so thank you to staff and everyone for listening. And I hope that folks are happy and out there and enjoying those courts. Just giving a shout out. So good job, everybody.
We had an officer break his ankle, I think.
Oh, no.
See, that's why he should have stuck with tennis.
I will get that confirmation to City Council around the number of pickleball courts and the locations so that we can promote those. And then with respect to Mayor Potem's suggestion, we'll work with our communications team to get some of the proactive information out to the community around the city's efforts, decades of efforts on transit-oriented development, including downtown, our development at the Orchard, development in Westminster Station, around how ahead really of this legislation the city is and has been over the years, which is one of the reasons why it doesn't make sense for Westminster to be making zoning changes along our major transit corridors. We've got our.
Letting others make our decisions.
Yeah.
Set it as best for Westminster.
And as our planning team says, that zoning is not planning. And the city has been very good at planning our city. And it does relate directly to our water use and our water availability. So we'll get all that material out as soon as we can onto our city website. Thank you for that.
Councilor Demont.
I was just going to make sure that the water is front and center because the feedback that I've been getting is a, quite frankly, thanks from the community. Being the one who's been sitting here for the last eight years, I've seen a lot of folks come and go in a lot of direction pushed by the letter in terms of us doing too much density. And so I think the community is still sensitive to that and they understand, you know, what the governor's plan or the law would push in terms of how much more dense we'd have to be and we just simply don't have the water for it. So I was hoping that part of the conversation is, you know, back to even why we delayed the comp plan is because we wanted our comp plan to match water and what we actually can build to. So I'm glad to hear that suggestion, but I want to make sure that we're holistic with the water piece too. Because that's, I mean, that's, that piece on top of the Home Rule is where our citizens have said how dense they do or do not want the city to be. And that's been a topic of conversation over the last four elections.
Before I forget, Lindsay, when we were touring yesterday. Before I forget, Lindsay, when we were touring yesterday, I mentioned that the condos we're going to go in and stuff. Do we have a date yet for groundbreaking? My shovel's, it's getting cold waiting. But anyway, she shared that the people that built those townhomes also do affordable housing and they're working in a couple of our surrounding cities. And I, in case you didn't know that, I share.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Yes, we are expecting to break ground in the next four to six weeks and definitely want to invite all the City Council to that. So we are excited and getting ever closer.
And don't forget Sean Boyd wants to be invited.
Yes, good guess, thank you.
That's all I have here.
Okay, thanks. Presentations, let's get on with our business. Welcome.
Next up is our item on the budget and Erin Farider from our policy and budget team will take us through most of the session, joined by Paul Knippel, Director of Public Works and Utilities. I wanted to provide an opening comment that these are options, we're going to present options and recommendations to City Council as to next steps in the development of the 2026 budget. I want to note that we wanted to come to council first and get your direction before conducting any significant stakeholder outreach. And I want to make that point in the context of both our fire department and our streets options before you. So for example, specifically, Mr. Knippel will talk about the roadway improvement fee and this is something we've talked with City Council and received your direction on. Just know that we haven't yet gone out to our stakeholder groups with this one and we'll get your direction here tonight and then we'll go ahead and interact with our stakeholders. I just wanted to make that point, especially if some of our stakeholders are listening tonight, that the idea is to not get out in front of City Council until we've got your direction. Then we'll go out and work with our stakeholders. And the same also applies on our fire department options. And what Erin Farider will be talking through on the fire is mostly timeline tonight around one of the bigger elements of the fire department potential funding solutions. And once we get a framing of that timeline, we'll then design our stakeholder engagement process to match that timeline, if that makes sense. All right, Erin.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and Council. We met almost a month ago, almost the day, for our May budget workshop. Sorry, I'm used to having a mic on my head, not in front. I mean, we're here tonight to review the feedback and guidance that was shared. More specifically, we will, we'll review the 2026 budget development process and build on the guidance shared to review fire and streets infrastructure options and recommendations. The budget provides the foundation for the city's work and the execution of the strategic plan. While it may feel like a continuous cycle, moving from adoption to implementation to future planning, the process itself is essential. It ensures the approach remains deliberate, aligned with long-term goals, and is shaped by meaningful collaboration. As City Manager Andrew shared at the May budget workshop, the 2026 budget will be developed using a lean approach. Lean, efficient, and aligned with our community's needs. The process aims to collaboratively, collaboratively develop a budget that optimizes resources and aligns with key needs. While we're about halfway through, the largest chunk of our work is ahead of us and that's why we are looking forward to City Council's guidance as we develop the budget. Here's an overview of the process to this point. Started in January, and almost every single month, we've discussed various things regarding our budget, our current, as well as setting the foundation for moving forward. With that groundwork in place, the most important work is in the coming months. Your continued guidance and input are essential to shaping the budget that supports high-quality core services, fosters resilience, in order to promote a safe and a thriving community. Two things that are not noted on here is that we will be, policy and budget will return in probably middle of August to share the Human Services Board and the Scholarship Last year, we launched our online community request process to capture requests for new and additional resources for projects and programs. The process was initially open from April 3rd to, to May 2nd, but was extended through June today, June 2nd, because we didn't have the participation that we anticipated. So now I have a question for you. We just closed today, how many responses do you think we've received?
I can't tell, because I already know.
You can shout it out.
It says right there.
So this was, this was as of, as, the over, over 90 was as of last week when we published?
Okay.
So when we closed this morning?
120.
Higher.
150.
Higher.
200.
236. So staff is currently reviewing those now. From our initial glances, that 236 does not necessarily represent 236 individual, unique requests. So we are going through each of them to try and figure out which ones are together, which ones are similar requests. And then we will navigate what that final number looks like. And as we build our 2026 budget, just as we did with our 2025 budget, we will respond and address what those questions, concerns, those suggestions, suggestions are. And as a reminder, we want to be transparent and accountable to the things that we've said that we are going to do. So in 2025, we had our section of the requests and as part of our 2026 budget, we will have a follow-up of what has happened or what progress has been made on those requests or if they've already been closed out, what the, what that status is. Building on the feedback from the May budget workshop, we will review the fire and streets infrastructure funding options and recommendations and invite your guidance on next steps. The next two slides are reviewed in the same slides that Chief Burke and City Engineer John Burke shared at the workshop to refresh our infrastructure needs. So our fire station's additional funding, our current annual operational and CIP needs about $9 million. The two green cells indicate the funds are already secured utilizing U R A dollars to move forward with Fire Station 8. Streets, additional funding needed, approximately $26 million for annual program funding. Filling the entire gap at once is not immediately attainable. We understand that. As a result, staff had developed funding options based upon the May budget workshop to collaboratively start to begin bridging that gap. We'll start with our streets infrastructure funding and Paul Knippel.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just to recap sort of where we've been and what is some of the drivers behind this, the main drivers behind what we're going to show you tonight here in the next few slides is really the feedback that we heard during the May 3rd workshop. And that was a desire to, to develop a roadway improvement fee that, that recognizes the amount of traffic that any particular land use will generate. Secondly, there was the desire to, to shift more of the burden onto the business slash commercial sector as opposed to the residential sector. The third goal was to have a tiered approach, so we could begin to make some distinction between some of those retail and commercial businesses and the relative impacts that they have. And then the last was to have some caps in there. So if you recall, some of the earlier versions of a roadway improvement fee that we brought back a year or so ago, just really were somewhat simplistic in that we separated the commercial from the residential and stopped. And then we heard more feedback from council that we want a little, that you all would like to have a little more granularity on the commercial retail side as opposed to just simply two categories. That's what we tried to capture here. In summary, to go back to the number that Erin provided here a moment ago, we've identified $26 million annually for a total streets approach. This is the pavement, the concrete curve and gutter, traffic calming projects that we have identified so far, and our traffic signal infrastructure. So that's, that top line there is, is the need. And then how we've been filling that thus far has been through current sales and use taxes, this is the general capital improvement fund, basically. It's a large portion of the city's general capital improvement fund, is that $6 million. External funds, this is tagged down there at the bottom from outside sources. And then the current roadway improvement fee generates about $4 million a year. So with that current formula, we, we have about a $9 million annual gap. And so as we move forward here, we're going to assume that we're holding the current sales and use tax portion steady and constant and we're going to hold the external funds constant. So those variables remain fixed. The variable that we'll focus on will be the roadway improvement fee. So just a very brief history, the, the roadway improvement fee was created in 2007 and set at $3 per water meter, whether you were commercial use or residential use. There were some incremental increases to that listed there. It went up by roughly a dollar at a time, the last one being to the current level at $6, which was 10 years ago. So we've been at $6 per meter for 10 years now. If we kind of look back at what might have been, had we adjusted that along the way at 3% annually, we would be at just over $8 per unit now, or per meter now. And if we had followed a 6% increase, we'd have been just under 11% or $11 rather per meter. And then, and another way to compare to this is that the construction cost increase has roughly been about 6.5% a year. And that would put us, had we followed that, would be around $10, $10.75. So that gives you a ballpark of had we made some incremental gains along the way, we would be in another, we would have kept up a little bit better than we might have. So this is a little bit busy, I would just draw your attention to the left box there. So this is the non-residential side. So just laying the residential component aside for the moment, this is going to focus on the retail and commercial aspects of the equation. And so when we go through and we look at all of our land uses and we then do the calculations on how many daily trips all of those different businesses that we have in town generate, we, we have these different land uses. So the retail and service commercial accounts for just over 94% of all the traffic out of the overall business commercial segment. The other three elements there, the institution, office, and industrial are, are much less, they're closer to the 6% out of everything that's generated by non-residential. So what we did is that we developed the fee categories as it's shown on the, on the right-hand side. And this is generated in-house, we kind of followed a little bit about what City of Loveland has done in, in their work. And we took that retail and service commercial and divided that out into three different groups, as you can see. One would be the, the retail superstore. This is Target, Walmart, Costco, Dollar Tree, those that have multiple purposes and generate a lot of traffic. That's the retail superstore. We have, I think, 10 of those in the, in the city. The next tier down would be retail high traffic. This is generally those that generate more than 1,000 trips per day and there's just under 300 of those in the city. And then the moderate traffic is, is the third category, which is generally less than 1,000 trips per day. And then we combined all of the others, which is called, now called other commercial, we took the institution, office, and industrial and put them into one category. And if you see down at the bottom, we've, we've, we're beginning to account for out-of-city retail uses. So this would be business license holders that are outside of the city limits that are, that are selling to, to residents and business inside the city, but they have to have a delivery into the city. So there's, we, we have got some ways that we believe that we can account for, for that impact on our, on our roadway system as well. So we're going to, as we move forward here, we'll talk about the fee categories there on the right-hand side. And this is going to be the basis of our, of staff's recommendation. So these fee categories, a little bit more definition here, again, the, the superstore, any business that's classified as a warehouse, club, or supercenter. The, the high traffic, there's some examples of, of those types of, of land uses. And then the, the moderate traffic retail is something that's less than the high traffic. So we know how many we have in, in the retail service commercial totally within the city and we've, we've been able to divide those off. I've got some very long lists of all of the different business licenses that we have in town and we were able to account as to how many fall into each one of these categories. The other commercial is again, the institutional, office, and industrial uses that we have in town. And that, those are the businesses that don't meet any of the criteria for the, for, as shown above. And then we have the out-of-city retail trade. And that, we have over 8,000 out-of-the-city business licenses right now in our database. And, but we've only applied about 3,600 of those to this model. Those are the ones that are retail or manufacturing. So there's a, there's a lot of other service businesses that are taxed, that are outside the city, that provide services inside the city, but they're, they're not, it's not a commodity coming into the city that would require something be delivered. So those we left off of our, our model. So this is our, our recommendation based on everything we've heard so far. This kind of rolls it all up. We, we're recommending going to, raising it by $2 a month for the residential side to $8. If you think back a few slides, this would be had we gone up 3% per year since, for the last 10 years, this is where we would be right now. We've got a non-residential stratus right here, that we've, we've got monthly fees proposed that correlate and correspond to the traffic generated by each of those land uses. These numbers are generally what we felt would have been acceptable as caps, had we applied just a dollar per trip sort of model. Some of those fees would have been very, very high and so we, we derived these, these, these fees proposed. I would call your attention to, do you see the estimated revenue column there and then the current revenue? So the, the current revenue for residential is around 3.7 million and this would, this would take us to about 5 million on the residential side. So there's some growth on the residential side. But if you look down at the non-residential total, we'd be going from $69,000 revenue per year, roughly for the commercial that we're collecting right now. Again, that's on a per meter basis, we don't have nearly as many commercial retail establishments as we do residential establishments. And, and that, we'd take that up to just over 3.4 million. So you can see that the growth and the overall revenues is skewed heavily toward the, the non-residential sector here, which. So then, this is the same slide as we showed earlier, only there's one more line here indicated as proposed new roadway improvement fee, so we, we add $4 million to the mix. And that, that brings our funding gap down substantially from $9 million a year to, to $5 million a year. Our, the implementation timeline that we proposed here, so there's several different pieces. We, we have in here proposing, of introducing an ordinance. So the current fee is in an ordinance form and we would propose that we, we draft that ordinance, depending on kind of the direction we get here this evening, we draft the ordinance, we, we build in some features that we could take input on right now that gives us some flexibility to, to maneuver. There's some things yet that we haven't probably accounted for that we'll need to adjust with this fee on, on how it lands. So the ordinance would have to be broad enough to, to accomplish that, but we'd like to do that this summer. Then the outreach campaign, as Jody mentioned earlier, where we engage businesses and the residents and then really an implementation of a year from now, roughly. We've got to build this, this isn't, we can't just flip a switch, we've, we've got some work internally we have to do to build a system that's going to run this. Then another consideration here would be if, you know, with, with any ordinance, would the council want to put in automatic inflationary increases? We have this with taffees and water right now, so that would be something. And with a timeline, so that could be from 2026 implementation. And then just for the next five years, build those in and then see where we are in five years. So just to recap, we think that we've accomplished the goals here that, as we understood them from council of acknowledging and trying to address the things that we'd heard from council in the past, according to these items. And, you know, before I get to these questions here, I did want to acknowledge our city engineer, John Burke here, and his staff, Seth Plas and Lauren Walcott, and their, their work and really since May 3rd, just really digging deep to try to put this together for you today. And so the questions here are, does the city council wish to proceed with implementing the roadway improvement fee as proposed? And then if so, what would the city council's desire be with respect to inflationary adjustments being built in as part of the process? With that, I'll be here for questions and I'll turn it over to Erin.
Questions? May I approach him?
One, this is really exciting, so thank you for looking this up. So just a quick question for innovation number one. I am supportive. I just have the, the retail high traffic, does that include all drive-throughs? Okay. I'm going to yes. I'm sorry, nods in the back, but.
Yes.
And then the out-of-city retail, does that include Amazon and the like?
It's not directly Amazon unless they're, they're sort of the pass-through. So we're not hitting Amazon or FedEx directly. It's the folks that have business licenses with the city that are selling to, to, to others within the city of Westminster.
Okay. And then these are monthly payments?
That would be yes.
Okay. So yeah, and I have to sort of calibrate them, run them through the business community. Overall, I'm supportive with the direction and the tiering that you've done and the separate, you know, the different types of uses. So, and for number two, I don't know if it's inflation or if it's the CPI index or something. Is inflation good, we don't know where that's going to go, but CPI tends to be a little more.
Another word instead of inflationary might be indexed.
Okay.
Yeah, probably is a better word.
Okay, thank you.
And you were okay with $8?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in understanding that we've restarted it at three, we've raised it over the years, I do like a sort of limit on the increases, just so we can just have a upper limit, particularly for the residential.
Councilor Carmelia?
I, in our budget session, I had asked for us to take a look at the roadway improvement fees, and that's exactly what you've done. And I just want to say a thank you, big thank you, because I think that this approach is strategic. Having a tiered approach makes sense. It's proportional to the use of the roads. And, and yet we were, we really carefully balanced the load that we're putting on residents by, you know, only raising it to eight while proportionally putting the balance on our higher retailers. So I just want to say that I think this makes so much sense. I think it's practical, it's logical, and I'm in full support of both one and two. I think that, and I realize that we're in the process of doing this, but I've mentioned it before, I think that for all of our fees, we should make sure that we have some sort of annual inflation so that we keep up and that we don't shock residents when we suddenly have to bump up the cost, right? And so I think that it's smart for us to include some sort of inflationary process and then take a look in five years. So full support.
That's for Ireland.
I'm concerned that Amazon's getting off the hook. Because they're the ones that ride out up and down my road more than anybody. So I don't know what we can implement for Amazon. I don't think it's fair to the other Walmarts and Targets of the world that Amazon's getting a break. So I don't know how we deal with that, but Amazon's using our roads more than almost any company. As far as the inflationary, wonder if we have a deflationary period? Do they, does it go down the other way?
And that would be, that would be the trick that we would need to write into the ordinance somehow. If we're going to, if it's going to go with inflation or ride with the market, that's one thing. If it's going to be indexed to a construction cost index or consumer price index, which I, I think would be more appropriate that way. I mean, those probably don't go down necessarily, but they may not go up as much in some years as others. And that keeps up with construction, which is what we're trying to accomplish with the, with the increases.
Well, our, our economy right now is really unstable. So to hit businesses even more and residential is hard for me right now. So I would like to have discussions with businesses about this instead of just implementing and no discussion. And residents are already, are going to hardly pay their bills now. So I don't, I mean, $2, not a big deal for some of us, but to others it is. So, so I would like more feedback from the residents and the businesses before I make a decision.
Councilor Zadi?
I have a quick, quick question. So first of all, thank you for bringing back. I think you did hit all the bullets from the meeting. Did you look into the daily trips model?
This is all, all based on daily, daily trips.
So some cities are doing where it's like, you take the number of businesses, multiply that by the specific trips per day times a fee. So rather than a monthly cost, which is what we're doing, the cost is a total of their actual daily trips times a fee.
We have done that and it, it gets the dollar amount per month or annually, however you want to look at it, is very high for a lot of businesses.
Probably too big of a shock.
It's, it's a really big number and, and it forces a cap. I mean, you, we start looking at caps and then that's kind of where we landed there with our recommendation.
So I, I love the idea of basically catching up the costs because we haven't, we have not been raising the fees even through high moments of inflation. So we're basically catching up the businesses who use these roads the most. I don't like the idea of an increase on residents, just to be honest. I, I think, I agree with Councilor Ireland, this, this is probably not the time to do that. I, I would love, and I would love to actually hear from the community first. But the model I agree with is just the levels that we set at that. I think we need engagement first before we just jump into it, but that's just me.
Councilor Hop?
So is it my understanding that you're asking for our direction so you can speak to the businesses and speak to our residents? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that takes care of that because there's no point in talking to businesses if we're not going to agree to this. Because there's nothing to talk to them about. So I think you did a really good job listening to us during our, our budget meeting. And I think that you came back with something, I think it's, it's creative as it's not exactly what we were talking about as far as a fee per trip. But I think this is a really good way to get the revenue without stressing our businesses too much. And so I'm a yes on one and I'm a yes, a yes on two.
Councilor Demott?
I'm happy to let you go out and gather feedback on, on both of them. I have some concerns. In terms of going after the non-residential, that's something that goes back, at least to the last council, we've been trying to get something done. I'm glad to see something on paper. And I mean, if you look at it in terms of just what the increase is versus what it is today, it looks, you know, like it's even. But I mean, that was the whole thing in my mind, is they're the ones generating the most traffic on our roads. I would agree on delivery. I wouldn't pick on one particular delivery, but I mean, one of the things that's been consistent throughout the time that I've been involved is, say, for example, trash trucks and the weight that they put on streets. So, you know, how are those businesses that drive large vehicles being accounted for? I think most of those businesses still have to, well, I'm not sure if the delivery services, but I think the trash services have to have licenses in the city in order to operate. So I'm curious how we're accommodating them. I would have liked to see, quite frankly, more on the non-residential versus the residential because I thought that was the direction of this. If you look at this in terms of money raised, it's not, I mean, it is more the non-residential, but, you know, I'm just, want to make sure that we're actually doing a good job of capturing all of that high-traffic use because it's what's really tearing up the roads. And one other thing that I don't see on here that'd be nice to know is how much, how many trips the residential is actually making versus, I mean, you showed us trips for the non-residential, but I'm not seeing trips for the residential. If that was in the packet and I missed it, I apologize, but you know, it wasn't in the slide. So I'd be curious about that. And then the last thing that I have big concern about is tying it, making any kind of automatic increases. Because I don't think that we, I think that we should annually be looking at it, just like we do with our, our water rates or any of our other fees. But I'm not, you know, I wouldn't want to tie the future councils and staffs to something like that because you just don't know. And I think about my time on council, COVID is something we would have never imagined. And so we, you know, if you have to make decisions based on that kind of thing, I'm just concerned about making automatic increases. In general, you know, I appreciate the work that's been put into it, but I just, you know, anything that goes on our utility and our ratepayers, and I'm sensitive to. So I want to make sure that we're being thoughtful with it.
Can I ask a quick question to that? Is waste management in there somewhere?
They are not. They're, they're under a separate business licensing process from what I understand. And so we, we didn't include them necessarily in, in here.
Yeah, I think that's my biggest concern is the two biggest users are not even included, waste management and Amazon. So.
Well, any trash.
Any trash, yeah.
Public.
All the trash companies and Amazon are the real.
Or delivery in general, you said FedEx wasn't involved either, right? I mean, UPS.
The reason that the FedEx and the Amazon weren't specifically targeted for themselves, it was, we're capturing the load on the roadways by virtue of the, the sales that are coming into the city from, from the external businesses.
I mean, on that argument though, you could say the same thing about Walmart or anybody else. They're all paying same, same sales tax. I mean, if we're going to be equal with it, in my mind, I mean, that's, that's what I've heard a little bit from the business community in general when we talked about this. But, you know, for me, reality is, is they're still generating more trips. I could say the same thing about a resident, that a resident's paying property tax, they're paying sales tax, but we're still, you know, charging them a fee on the infrastructure. So, I mean, I, I hear it, but like, if you really talk through it and you think about it, they're all kind of, all paying somewhere. And, you know, for a long time, the residents have been taking the burden as far as paying a separate infrastructure fee versus the businesses.
I think we can work with what we've heard here tonight. I appreciate the feedback on the structure that we have and the framework, and we can refine that. And we'll work through Erin and Jody and come back with something further about what our next steps would be.
I haven't spoke yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. I get forgotten often, but I let everybody else speak a couple of times and then I remember I haven't spoken. And not ju, I know you've talked about going out and talking to the businesses, which is crucial. But how are we going to reach out to communities so they understand? And it is a year from now. It isn't going to happen, right? Even for everybody is going to, or the citizens, are you going to start January 1st?
Any changes would be a year from now.
Yeah. So I would like to see us, whether it's through any of the town halls we have coming up or whatever it is, I mean, Friday night, we'll be down in Historic Westminster with a booth. So we can start talking to people, getting, you know, sharing truth of why we're doing it. But I would like to see us not just target businesses, but we need to be communicating with public. And that might be our job as we have town halls and different things that we go out to communicate with the public. And because when I read your report and you start, you showed what it could be 1075 if we had kept, kept up with stuff. And I know just with asphalt, how that has been astronomical. And I agree with whatever you go looking at, not just an automatic percentage, but what the actual, what it actually is. Because there's times we're flat. And so if that's the case, then we should give the break to our consumers. So with all that, and knowing that you're going to go out and speak, and we're going to speak to community, for now, I'm for both of them. So that gives you Mayor Pro Tem, Councilor Carmelia, Councilor Hot and myself for both of the pieces. Councilor Zadi and Demott want either more information or a no right now. And Councilor Ireland needing more information before she decides. So we just need to all report back as we start getting feedback so that we stay tuned.
May I? Can I add one other thing? Because to your point of sometimes we're being flat, the other piece of the equation that I want to make sure we don't lose in this, and when my concern always is, when you have automatic increases built in, it's easy to lean on those versus us making sure that we're turning over the stones and squeezing the radish to make sure it led as much as it can. And so I, you know, I just don't want us to also get into that bad habit because we're starting to get into a good cadence where we're making sure we're looking for the dollars and the savings so that we're not having to increase it that much.
And to his point, we're talking about lean optimization. I want to know what we're exactly doing to do those things. Because we can say those words, but what do they mean? What are we doing differently there that we didn't do before?
Need anything else from us?
Go ahead on that one.
Okay.
On this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that feedback. We will now zoom out to consider a ballot measure specifically supporting fire and streets infrastructure, including the timing, outreach, and development strategies. This is one of the handouts that I just shared with you. There's a lot of information on here, so I thought I'd hand out for reference. This is what we shared at the May budget workshop with addition of two columns. One is the accommodations tax or lodgers tax depending on the city and marijuana tax. So you can see a larger picture of our neighboring cities and what their tax, tax rates are. Considering the annual fire and streets infrastructure, the analysis shows two options in regards to a ballot measure. So building on the conversation that we just had, we would look more towards the rights So building on the conversation that we just had, we would look more towards the right side, but acknowledging both. Is that the gap that we're seeing for fires annually, about $9 million? Streets is about $9 million totaling 18. We move forward with the proposed roadway improvement fee, understanding the time and implementation and the engagement that goes with it. That would reduce the streets fee, as Director Knippel shared, to $5 million. So the gap would be reduced to about $14 million annually for fire and streets infrastructure. Stepping back several slides, our goal is to bridge the gap, to make steps, implement different strategies to try and close that gap. Hearing the feedback from city council that fire and streets infrastructure is a top priority for the city moving forward. So building on implementing proposed roadway improvement fee that would allow us to receive approximately $4 million and reducing our annual gap from nine until five. On the right-hand side, there are possible ballot measure combinations that we could explore to try and narrow that gap with that 14 or to accomplish all of that 14, depending on the direction. So there's an asterisk, because those are just options. The polling that we would move forward with would provide resident preferences on which options they would prefer that we would move forward with. But we are starting with the taxes and the feedback that we received from our May budget workshop of just starting points. Again, understanding that these are combinations, and depending on the feedback we've received from the residents, we would shift and pivot and move forward based upon those. So your larger handout is this. This is an attempt to structure a large process with multiple steps and components related to our fire and streets infrastructure funding pathways. There's two pathways that you'll see, a rapid and a methodical. You'll see orange circles throughout. Every orange circle is a city council decision where we'll come and request your direction, your guidance. On the outer sides of each, for each pathway, there is a timeline based upon what we would need to accomplish to be able to get a ballot measure. I'm not going to say this right, Abby, so please correct me. On the ballot in the correct, or agreed upon in the correct timeframe. So the rapid path would have a starting now so that we would have an approved ballot measure by August 25, 2025. Our methodical method would still start us now, but we would have an approved ballot measure by the last week in August of 2026. Similar steps in both, but the timeline is slightly different. So we're going to start at the top to gauge our agreement, and then we'll kind of work our way through if everyone's comfortable with that approach. So our first question, is our city council recommend pursuing a ballot measure to support fire and streets infrastructure?
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Thumbs up, either yes or no, depending on your body language. Okay, so we have a yes. Awesome. So we're moving to the next step. It's kind of our own decision tree, choose your own adventure, but maybe not as fun with the characters. So thank you for rolling with my logical process. So we have now a rapid path and a methodical path. The timing is what really guides both. If we move forward with the rapid, we need to have conclusion by August 25 with that ballot language. We would still poll. From those polling, we would share those results to guide the language. Then we would share that with the community. Engage them the best that we can with the timing that's available. And then we would have the ballot language by August 25 to then go quiet and allow those in the community to take the lead. The more methodical path would allow us, or would have us begin right now as well. But we would start with developing a polling or initial engagement plan, coming back to you with how in the next year we want to process and how we want to engage and tell our story. Then we would go into the polling process. Having more time in our back pockets would allow us to either use the consultant that we've used previously or to do an RFP for a consultant that meets our needs. From the information that we gather from that polling, we would share information, we would share those results with city council. And based upon your feedback on moving forward or what we received from the community, we would then roll out a full community engagement plan while also drafting ballot language. But our end goal would be August of 2026, rather than with the rapid path of August 2025. So go ahead.
Well, to me, this is a part where we can't just do thumbs up, thumbs down, because I think it requires context. For me, I think that if we can get something together that we think can be baked enough out by then and be able to educate and get stakeholders involved, I think that it should be this year. When we're talking, we're basically talking life safety issues. And I think that that's the story that we missed out on last year. I think the most powerful piece of information that I have heard in this whole conversation is when Chief Bird shared at the budget retreat this year, the budget workshop with the public, the amount of time that it takes in order for you to go brain-dead. And that's the reason why we have those service levels and that we are not meeting those service levels. I think that is a story that the public will understand. So for me, I do not want to kick the can on something that's life and safety to the next council. Some of us may not even be here next year, and that is not something I'm willing to risk. So I would like to see us go down the rapid path and figure out if we can't get the stakeholders, understanding that there is room to pause if it looks like we're not going to be able to get a successful campaign together. But I'm confident that we understand these issues well enough as just laid out that we could do that this year. So I would be a rapid because of those things.
My concern is with the rapid, it's contract with the previous polling consultant. We never met that consultant. We were never included in any of those conversations. We don't even know what was asked and how it was asked to the public. And those things make a difference. The company I used to work for, we did that for every one of our clients. And so I'm very knowledgeable of this process. And they came back supposedly with a 70% passage, and that didn't happen. So I don't know who they are. But at this point in time, I have huge question marks if they're the ones to do it. Councilor Azadi.
I agree with Councilor Demat. I think we need to have action this year. Each day we spend not building is, the cost of a dollar will increase. And if we wait till next year, everything will get much more expensive, much, much more expensive. And we shouldn't be that wasteful, so I think now's the time.
Councilor Hott?
I agree with Councilor Demat for all the reasons Councilor Azadi just stated.
Councilor Carmelia?
I share similar concerns to yours, Mayor. I was going to bring up the same questions. So I'm hoping, can we pause? Is there any feedback on that?
So based upon the timeline, in order for us to accomplish a successful polling and to build out engagement, drafting the language, we would need to move forward with Magellan strategies, who we utilized previously. Preemptively, without making any commitments, we reached out to them to ask some questions of how much this may cost if we worked with them again. So depending on the specifics of the interviews, and if it was just text or text plus a phone, the price range would be between 16,500 to 26,500. What we would need to do, if based upon the questions and the concerns that have been raised, is that we would schedule for Magellan strategies to come to present. Also, understanding, adding that into our process then shortens everything else, understanding that we're starting with about, I think it's 10 Mondays, to get us to August 25. So we can absolutely, if we want to move forward with a rapid path, bring in Magellan strategies to be able to talk you through with potential questions and next steps. We can do that. If we would go out to an RFP, that would take several weeks. And that, again, with a shortened timeframe, constrains telling our story and getting that feedback from the community, it makes it a bit harder. And I don't know, I saw our communications manager.
Oh, you were behind me, you just looked in.
He may be able to elaborate a bit more of the extensive nature, or lack thereof, of a community engagement between a rapid and a methodical. So with the rapid, it's notifying versus truly engaging in the methodical. But I'll allow our communications managers, not allow, but if you wouldn't mind. Because it would be really helpful.
I'm not going to say anything that Erin and Councilor, you already know. We need time to do engagement. In this narrow window, it would be notifying. We would push out every piece of information, every fact set that we had, including, I think, what Councilor Demat highlighted as probably the most compelling case, which is, four minutes is, that's the difference between life and death. And right now, there are gaps in the service area that we aren't able to hit. We also have to know that and acknowledge that. In an attention economy, starting something like this in the summertime when everyone is doing other things will raise some potential barriers to success for us.
That's the reason this conversation, or if we were doing a survey, should have been February and March for those reasons. Because May was a month that just was whirlwind, too many things going on. So I get that. But, and I don't know when Magellan did this last thing, but based on results and knowing, we never saw anything that they did. And if they only did it via Facebook and texts and whatnot, I have real questions about that. So it may mean, if we want to do the rapid path, that may mean we have more meetings. And we just have to commit to that. Because that's what it's going to take to get it done. It has to be done right this time, or you wait till 26.
Thank you. I agree with everything that you just said. So I think I'm in the minority here, but I believe that this process has to be done right. And so, so honestly, I see the pros and cons of both approaches. I've held a lot of one-on-ones, sorry, yes?
I'm just going to take objection to you saying that you're in the minority by saying you want it done right. I think everybody at this table wants it done right.
Agreed, agreed. But, okay, so I'm leaning towards the methodical path. And so, and that's just because I think that something as difficult as getting a tax passed in Westminster requires a lot of engagement. It really does, and it requires a lot of education. And it requires getting the word out to the community, which I think that we do a great job in trying to engage our community, but we've seen at our town halls. You know, I think a really great turnout is max 50 folks. Usually it's more like 20, 30, right? Now, granted, those are highly engaged folks. But how do we get to the average voter, every household that's actually going to vote? That is a very difficult task. And I think it takes repeated exposure. And it takes, you know, they say someone has to see something in a campaign at least three times to really latch on to it. And best practice is seven times, which is very expensive. To your point, we all want this done right. It is a matter of life and death. And the pros and cons bit of it is, I understand, you know, if we push this out one more year, that's money, right? Everything costs more in a year. So just know that I can be persuaded, you know, if the council ends up saying that we need to do the rapid, I can see that. And I just want to be able to chime in once again, if we end up going that path with strong direction, I think, for Magellan, and strong direction in the clarity of the language that we end up using on the ballot, and a lot of input from council. So personally, I think I'm still on the methodical path. I want to see this work, and I want to see it done, if not correctly, then as methodically as possible, to know that we overturned every stone. But we'll see how this goes, and I can be leaned into the rapid. I just want to make sure that we really get clarity in the language and brevity on the ballot language as much as possible.
Councilor Ireland?
Well, we know the results of the last election, it didn't pass. So we know that the public doesn't see the benefit of a half percent sales increase. That we know without a poll. So maybe it was too much, maybe it wasn't covering enough. But I don't think we need a poll, another poll. Because we already know what they wouldn't accept. And we did not educate them that they should accept it. Also, I think I'm done with surveys. I think we know the public, if we know that we need more fire stations, that it's our task to make sure the public is safe. Do we really need to poll them? But I think we need to think about how much we, how much they will accept, because a half percent was not okay without a lot of education. Even with education, it might not be okay for budget reasons. So what I want to know is how we like the roads, we're becoming more lean and optimizing, and giving this money, this extra money that we're going to save by being lean and optimizing, to roads and to their fire department. This extra money that we're spending at the dog park, $210,000 for planning something people don't want, that kind of money should be going to the roads, should be going to the fire department, so we don't have to talk about taxes all the time.
So you're not for going, period?
No, I'm not going, I'm not for any of it unless it's a less of an amount. And it's going for roads and the fire department. Not just for the half percent. That did not fly. We know that didn't fly. But if we really need it, and we've done all that we can to save money other places, which I have not seen while I've been on here, then we can talk about a sales tax increase. But as far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't be talking about sales tax increases until we talk about spending and lowering our spending. Because we are not lean. I run a household lean. I know what lean is, and so do people who run a household. And we're not doing that in this city. And so that's my two cents.
Mayor Pro Tem?
So if I had my druthers, I would take the methodical path. But I suggest that, just kind of listening to the conversation, that we move forward. I do think that Magellan is good. And I think that if we could get them to do some, I know Councilor Ireland hates the polling, but I think if we can get them to do some polling, we have a decision point that we can evaluate and kind of determine, all right, do we push forward and go hard on the education? Or is it so tepid that we really have, that it shows us that we have some more work to do? I think we might know that with the polling. And then it might be helpful, too, to have Magellan kind of weigh in on, you know, off-cycle or on-cycle with the election. We were with the national election with this last round. Did that influence? Did that influence the vote at all in terms of who showed up to vote, the dynamic around it? Or, or, you know, so so giving us a little more information on how we can kind of strategically do this right and when the best timing would be. So I would kind of hedge toward with all those same caveats, right, that I heard from the mayor and Counselor Camelia, that I think we could move forward on the rapid path.
Counselor Demont?
Couple of things to share to the conversation from things I've heard from my colleagues. In terms of it costing more money potentially, if we wait a year, I'm not worried about the money, I'm worried about the lives. When we had this conversation in our budget retreat, one of my questions to the chief of the fire department was, how long does this take to roll out? So reality is, is we still have a long time where we have a gap in service that could potentially cost somebody their life. Or, you know, the difference between being brain dead and not. To me, that's that's meaningful. And on that same point, we did not have that education as part of the last ballot. So I understand what Counselor Ireland, what you're saying, but I think that that's part of why we were not successful last time. You know, and in terms of, you you had brought up that it was just fire. This is fire in streets. We were going, it would be something for both this time, which I think is also something that we heard from the community, that if we have needs, we should, we're asking for more tax dollars, that it should be something that's more flexible to accommodate the needs of the future of the city. And the other thing that I would say to, you know, in terms of one thing that is very different from this time is we are doing the work since Manager Andrews has taken the helm in terms of finding different ways for us to use funding. The URA is part of that. So that covered a big gap in, in, you know, one of our our needs. So, you know, there, there is a different story to be told compared to last time. I understand the complexity around getting it done. The other thing that I really harped on in our strategic planning session, which I will again, is we need to bring the stakeholders in now. So if you're gonna bring Magellan in, you should bring the union in, you should bring our Citizen Fire Academy group in. Those are the folks that are gonna go out there who understand the needs and they're gonna tell the story. You could potentially look at folks who went through the Civic Academy before. We have a lot of resources in volunteer groups who understand what the city of Westminster does, because we've done a good job with a handful of last years with our academies in order to educate folks, so.
I'd use the police academy.
Yeah, police academy too, because one of my asks was, how can we have some some co-sharing space? I understand their different needs. But when you, when you look at it in terms of, this is back to the conversation I had with Assistant City Manager Lindsay at the budget retreat, when when we were talking about a specific need versus a general need. If you look at the the taxes that have passed, even the ones that I voted on, because I typically am not a tax person. But when the school districts come and they say, here are all our needs and how we're gonna cover all those needs, I will vote on those things because I know exactly what you're gonna do with them and what your needs are and how it benefits my, the kiddos in our community. So we have that opportunity with this, and I think we've learned some lessons. It would be nice if we had a different group, but I think one of the, you know, benefits of going with the same group is like, okay, you guys were wrong last time, so let's, you know, why do you think you went wrong and and be able to ask them some questions? You know, with all that being said, I think that, yeah, it's a lift, but I think that, you know, we're capable of doing it and we have some resources that would get us there.
Counselor Ha?
Yes, so I agree with the mayor as far as if we need to have other council meetings, we should do that. We, I I don't want to wait another year, and this is our job. This is what we're supposed to do. And if that means that we need to have extra meetings, it means we have to have extra meetings to get this done. It's too important. The the next thing I want to say is we need to be very careful about how we speak about staff and we need to be careful that the things we say are accurate, because it 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 erodes the trust in government when we say things that are not true. Manager Andrews has done a very, very good job explaining ways that our city has saved money through the choices he's made and the choices of our other directors. The choices he has made and the choices our directors have made have saved us millions of dollars. So I don't know where some of my other colleagues have been for the last year and a half, but our staff does a great job. Our manager does a great job on finding ways to save our city money, and I just want to put that out there because otherwise it sounds like we're not doing a good job, and that's not true. Our our city manager and our directors are doing a fantastic job finding ways where they can cut in the budget. And I just want to put that out there because I think it's too important.
Counselor Azadi?
I just wanted to add that I agree with, if we need more meetings, let's let's have more meetings. But also, none of this works if that publicized bullet, that publicized, notified the community. That needs to start way sooner. And I agree with Counsel Ireland to the point of polling. Sure, let's do the polling, but more importantly, we need to actually invest city dollars to do mail, digital, paid social. We need an actual, you know, fallout. Multi, it can't just be social media, can't just be how we typically promo. We need to actually put money into the mail. I think we missed a lot of, we didn't educate last time, so the ballot failed. If we did real education to actually get the message out to as many people as possible, including mail, that will be a significant change from last time, and this will pass, right? Polling would be nice to know. But all of this, I think, needs to start sooner. And the majority of this time should be spent publicizing and educating. It's really about education on the need, right? What is the need? All those slides that we've been going through for fire. If we just educate the public on what the need is for a long period of time in all these different ways, I think that should do the trick, but we shouldn't de-emphasize that piece. That's really the most important thing.
Counselor Camelia?
To several of our points, Mayor Protem and Counselor Demont and yours as well, mayor, I'd like to see and understand what Magellan is doing differently this time. Because the very real risk that we faced is we had a shortened timeline last time, and I've heard that that was a very large reason of why the measure failed. So if we go ahead with the plan that sounds like we're leaning towards this evening, we will be doing, from what I can see, the same thing. So I'd like to see what was their plan, to your point, mayor, that we didn't see and what, but not only just, you know, the language, but what was their strategy? And then what is their strategy this time? And how is it different? And it sounds like we're gonna be very heavily involved, so that's fantastic. But still, I think that we need to see some concrete. Just, let's look at the plan.
Counselor Erin, did you have anything else? Mayor Protem? Okay, and I just asked questions, I did it again. Are we assuming the point five? Are we making no assumptions yet?
No, when we ran some various scenarios, knowing that once you move away from just straight sales tax to a combination that it can really be sliced and diced in a variety of ways. So just for consideration, if we were looking to reach four point one million dollars, the increase would be point four seven. So it would take us from three point eight five percent to four point three two percent. That would be if if the goal would be to have all of those, that gap being closed completely by sales and use tax. If we want to expand or depending on the polling questions that we ask, or which we tend to ask with your your direction. If we want to increase accommodation tax by a percentage, if we want to include, put out property tax, it would then decrease the sales and use tax increase, but then it would increase others. So we can speak pretty confidently about reaching that gap of the fourteen million with sales and use tax. But once we go beyond that, start to slice and dice, it would, we would need a bit more direction and comfort level, of comfort level and feedback from the community of what they would support.
I just know the more things you put on the ballot that you have to explain, the longer the the question's gonna be, and that's two, one or two more things we have to educate on. So at this point, my head is into just the streets and the fire and what does it take? And, but we'll figure that out when we talk with the consultant. He's just got to understand, I know it wasn't all his frustration, or all of his fault or her fault. It's what was directed by previous people sitting here. Not us, but how it all came down last year. So, but we are frustrated. So he's, I hope they just understand. Don't take anything personally, but we need some answers. They said it was gonna pass, have no idea how they got that answer, and it failed miserably. So I'm for going, starting the rapid, but it's going to have to be rapid, and we're gonna be, have to be doing many things at the same time. And and we have to do it well, and we have to start that education tomorrow, or we're doing it tonight. You just have to. So here's what I have. I have Counselor Demont this year and Rapid Path. Counselor Azadi this year, Rapid Path. Counselor Ha, Rapid. And have you changed to Rapid?
I will, yes.
So Counselor Camelia, Rapid. Counselor Ireland, wanting to know how we've been lean and no on a poll. Mayor Protem, Rapid. And I'm for getting it going.
So just to say back to make sure I'm on the same page, are we all comfortable with using the polling? Because I've heard a couple of no polling, just education. So as we figure out our next steps of coordinating with Magellan Strategies, if they can come back, if they can come next Monday, or if it's following Monday, depending on what their availability and schedule is, is it talking polling? Is that, that's the next step?
I'm a poller, I like it.
Counselor Camelia?
I'm for the polling, as long as we're doing the education at the same time. Like, how do we fit that language in there? Because we need to start that today.
I'm for polling if they're for polling.
Because it gives, sorry, it gives us that decision point. And that's what we need to Mayor Protem's point. So I think we need the polling to have that decision, that critical decision point. We're just gonna need that built in there.
It was hard to go out and talk to anybody last year. We didn't even know what the question they gave to the community was. It it just was very frustrating. So we all need to be on the same page. They need to hear hear where we're at. And like I said, if it takes some extra meetings, so be it. Let's just get this train going.
Okay, mayor and Mayor Protem, city council, staff has clear direction. We will endeavor to bring Magellan back in next Monday, if we can possibly get it arranged. And if not, we'll bring them in the following session. And in the meantime, we will start to put together what a tentative outreach and communication education program would look like. That's one of the main reasons Andy is here tonight at the table with us. So he's also been listening, and we'll start to craft that. Council's direction is strong. This is very, because of council's direction, this is very different than it was last time. Very clear and strong direction around public education and outreach. And looking at that rapid path timeline on the left of the table, we have that opportunity right up until the evening of August twenty fourth, I believe. And I don't know that we did it that way last time as a city. So that's one difference. And then.
And let's make it clear, that's when the city has to bow out, but we seven can do and go to every start thinking about the service organizations out there, HOAs, plant groups. I don't care who it is. If there's more than five people to ten people that meet, we should be there and sharing. Now, I just want to clarify for these folks too. Does anybody want to put extra on that question, or do you just want streets and fire? Let's just be very clear to it.
Just streets and fire.
I I think it's so important, we should focus on streets and fire.
No thoughts?
I still really want them to have co-space for the police to at least touch down, and I don't think that would hurt any to share with folks if you were gonna allow them to do that, because I'm a very big advocate of the fact that in the past, we've had problems with police officers having somewhere safe to go use the restroom. I know they can do that at the fire station, but the more fire station means that's more places for them to touch down and be able to safely go.
I asked the wrong question. I meant, do you want sales tax only, or do we want the other two things? I'm sorry. And I, you have a valid point, and we need, they need to hear that, but.
Sales tax is fine.
Sales tax? Mayor Protem?
I'd like to know with the polling, if the, they could look at sales tax and property tax, something, you know, simple. I I think with respect to what we're asking them for, we should be targeted, because I remember last time we went out for fire. Was it fire, public safety or something? It was too, too, too broad and and people didn't understand it, so. Focus.
Like a slush fund.
Yeah, focus. And honestly, I mean, to the point, to your question, maybe it ought to be a focused ask as well, not just split, I don't know, you know, I wouldn't want to split it. So if it's either property tax or sales tax, just something. One.
Yeah, okay.
I misunderstood. And so as far as explicit language, yes, streets and fire, I think that's what I agree to. And as far as, I prefer polling on to as far as whether it's property or sales, or what direction, yeah.
I just think if you add three things, I didn't realize when I brought up the accommodation tax, people have to vote on that too. The things that we have to and we don't have to, I, crazy to me.
I'm I'm a little lost. Are we, was there four people that say property? Because I'm not, I'm not for property tax.
Okay. What did anybody else think?
Sales, sales and use.
And do you want them to poll for property?
I think polling is fine, yeah.
So just pull, if they poll, just for polling, they poll for sales and property?
Yeah, let the polling decide if it's sales or property.
And we'll get to see this year the question that they ask and how they ask. That's, I'm more concerned about that. Okay? Does that give you a little bit more direction? Okay. Sorry, I asked the wrong question the first time.
Oh, great, because we ended up with two questions and we got clarity on both. This part wasn't addressed. It came out as part of the council's discussion. I could tell you that the fire chief and the command staff in fire are highly engaged with the with the staff and the personnel in fire. So that department is ready to roll based on council's direction. And I've also, the chief and I have also been having ongoing discussions with the union. They are also ready to track with us, depending on where council wants to go. So they are ready and ready to engage on either the twenty twenty five plan or the twenty twenty six plan. So I just wanted to let you know they're already in in with you, whichever your direction is.
What else do you need from us?
On this, I believe we've received the direction that we need for our our next step. So thank you very much for for your time.
I have a question. Andy, would you need extra investment from us or a more, you know, bigger communication plan?
As part of my work is I'm gonna develop a plan that's affordable and what we normally do, and then here's some extra things that we can do, and I'll bring it back.
Okay.
And make sure we understand Counselor Azadi's question. You're asking about what individual council members would be able to augment?
No, so if if we were to do a bigger communication plan for this to educate the public, I assume that would include, that needs more dollars to be spent. So if there's a need for extra dollars, come to us, ask us.
But if the Westie's going out before and hits every household before whatever the magic day is in August, we can certainly use that because it hits everybody. And that has to be concise, share the story and know the accountability that lies in it.
Multi-paced story?
Yeah.
Not to be the fly on the white ointment, but the summer Westie is, I'm just looking, I'm sure it's kind of landed in mailboxes in three weeks, and then the next one won't land until November.
So we'll look at, we'll look at options. We may look at, you know, a special edition light or something that we can get.
I hate to be the one to bring this up, but the, don't we typically do one that goes every household with the election? Well, but then that would be past the ballot. Well, that would be a question for the attorney to make sure if you can do it, just as a straight, here's what the question is. I mean, there is an education component that you can do without advocating for the city's position. So I would want us to look at closely how you might be able to make sure that we're within the confines of the law, but we utilize that because that is something that during an election cycle, everybody certainly is gonna look at.
I, just to speak to that, I have spoken with the city attorney a few times on this topic in various. I, just to speak to that, I have spoken with the city attorney a few times on this topic in various forms. And the city, and please stop me if you feel like I'm about to say something. But the city attorney's office is pretty comfortable with doing like a pro-con statement. It would be similar to something you'd see in a blue book. So that, that would probably be the most neutral way we could.
That'd be a perfect place for something like that if we were allowed to do it. So awesome, thank you.
Well, plus four of us are going to be knocking doors, so.
Double duty, girl.
Give us flyers.
Anything else you need?
None of this topic.
Okay.
Excellent. That's it.
Stop with me again though for the next one.
Do we need a five-minute break? That'd be nice.
Five-minute break before, yeah, okay.
I'll take that.
Tonight is, is a follow-up to the strategic plan workshop that we had, where City Council gave direction on each change that you wanted to see to the strategic plan. I then sent an information memo that summarized that. And a big part of the feedback on that from members of City Council was, we didn't have a chance in public meeting to go through these and confirm these wording changes. And some may not have landed exactly right. So there are, Erin will walk through three of those specific cases, but we'll go one edit at a time through the whole document. Two of them, Mayor Protam raised in an earlier emails. So staff has put those in the document. Councillor Izadi raised and gave wording today. So we will also address that. And councillor, we didn't have a chance to put that into the packet on Wednesday. But we want to make sure that we emphasize and review your suggested wording for one of those items. But just for completeness, we'll go through edit by edit, if you don't mind tonight.
Okay, it'll be the easiest.
That'll be the easy way to go.
Right on time.
Good evening again. Not just I introduced myself the last time. Erin Farid, Policy and Budget Manager. So as City Manager Andrews just perfectly laid out on the table. When we had our budgets, or our, sorry. Budget's gonna slip out of my mouth.
That's what you live and breathe.
We had our strategic plan workshop in February. City Council agreed with our vision, mission, guiding principles, and priorities, strategic priorities. What you'll see in the highlighted in your, in front of you, it's gonna be red. If you're looking at the memo, it's yellow. My apologies, I only changed one and not the other. Red sometimes can be intense with the color, but just track changes. So it's the objectives that have been added or modified based upon the feedback that we've received. So speaking briefly to, we'll start with the first one, which is 1.14. You'll notice that there are, it's not parentheses, where are the squares?
Or brackets?
Brackets, okay. In the brackets was language that was proposed by Mayor Protam to add ride share or similar services. And you'll also see that I added that as added language. So you are aware, if you see brackets in a red, track changes, that indicates additional language was provided, we were able to capture at this time. So we'll start with 1.14. Any additional questions or? Okay. 1.15?
There's a lot of changes from just giving.
We are here to receive and to capture them. I'm not gonna read them out loud. I can, if you want me to, I'm just gonna do the number and then we go from there unless, Mayor, you'd like to. Okay?
1.15, anybody have questions? Okay, good.
1.3.2? When we initially proposed this with the info only, a question was shared by Mayor Protam. And so you'll notice in parentheses, or no, sorry.
Brackets?
No, what's the, yeah, parentheses, is that right? Yeah, parentheses, sorry. Phew, my grammar. English teacher would roll over. This objective was further refined from where we started based upon feedback in the second analysis by our staff to make sure that it was captured in a manner in which we could execute. So how it was drafted previously wasn't feasible. Okay? 1.5.2? You'll notice in brackets, it was added under conducting inventory of the city's senior friendly policies and services to understand, one, why people might not want to, in brackets, or be able to, age in the city. That was the one addition. Okay, come. 1.5.3? Okay. Looking at the page bottom of the third page. Okay. 2.2.7? Turning the page, top of the page, 2.2.8? Moving down to 2.3.3? Continuing to 2.5.4? 2.5.5? Moving on to strategic priority three, community health and safety.
Sorry.
Absolutely.
Let's go back to 2.3.3. It talks about the city and its services. And just for some of our folks who are on, who have issues with landlords and just understanding leases and just housing stability, just, can we also improve just what resources are available to, like at the county level? I mean, maybe that's just already on a website.
Which one are you at?
It's 2.3.3-ish.
Can I get, I mean, I don't, one, we can't control what the county does. But in terms of what we do, it would be good to better educate that we have that legal services.
That's, yeah.
So if you wanna encapsulate that, that's something we could do and we should do because I'm surprised how often people don't know that we have that.
Yeah.
One thing I was wondering, I know Dr. Cog has Spudsmen for nursing homes. Do they have for rentals?
I can ask, I don't.
We need an Spudsperson that, because they're unbiased, they hear the concerns and they go to the other side and hear and observe and then figure out what's all needed and who all needs to be contacted or what needs to be done. And I just, when I was reading that, I just thought, I don't know if counties have them, but that would be the perfect thing for all of the different issues that people are starting to contact us with that are then afraid of retaliation because they spoke up.
Right. Okay.
Just my thoughts, as I read, I was sowing, so my free thoughts were coming.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I'll ask folks from Dr. Cog, but I think just to that spirit, to help connect people to those services.
I could suggest on 2.3.3, we could make a friendly amendment to that. To talk about, first, it would say, I'll put the city and its services and other related services that may be helpful. And then we can include our own funded services, like the legal services. We could also reference other material that a new resident might find helpful. If they're in Jefferson County, we can give them a pointer to Jeffco. If they're in Allen County, we can give them a pointer to Adco. Can we make that amendment?
Yes. Thank you.
Would you be comfortable if staff captured that to the best of its ability without coming back and report out on that wording? Okay.
Especially like our water rate, help the support program that we have. That'd be a nice one to put in.
Water assistance?
Yeah, the assistance.
Okay, so going back to, beginning with strategic priority three, so we're turning the page to 3.1.10. Moving down to 3.3.3. We're gonna turn two pages. To 3.8.2. Turning the page again, please, to 3.11. Moving on to strategic priority four, economic vitality. Turning the page to 4.1.10.
So, this is the one I sent the draft, I sent an email to council explaining, because when I saw the wording, it doesn't reflect what was discussed. So the draft, I'd like this to be amended to. Want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Research a comprehensive municipal strategy to expand access, improve quality, and reduce the cost of childcare in Westminster for both residents and employers. Examples may include identifying barriers families face in securing care, assessing provider challenges related to staffing, wages, and facilities. And three, exploring city opportunities through zoning, dedication of unusable property partnerships, and other, and more, access at city sites.
My question to City Manager would be, how much time is that gonna take?
Yeah, Erin, have we looked at, talked to some staff about what this might look like this afternoon?
We have. Councillor, Director Kimball, if you wouldn't mind, we talked about this earlier. One thing I want to, the word choice of examples may include, I think that may allow us, staff flex, may include allows a bit of flexibility depending on what's, what is out there to achieve. The research of a comprehensive municipal strategy, is that, am I comfortable with that? May allowing flexibility, so it's not exactly one, two, and three?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was the concept of letting, of using those words, may include, to give flexibility to staff. But I would hope time has been, so I think Ms. Kimball has been working on this through the year already, because this was what was discussed at the retreat.
Did you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but did you have senior in there?
And senior care, so in the email, I said you added in senior care. I don't know if you want that in this or a separate, but senior care was also the same.
I feel like you've been doing the work already. I like the flexibility, but I think that it's a fair call-out because it is something that Councillor Izadi and I asked for, those two things. I think it was kind of like, well, I'm cool with that, if you're cool with that.
Yeah, so both of those things, economic development, what's in our controls or no cost?
And I, having some conversations with Councillor Izadi about it, I think this is, you know, like, you've been doing, Director Kimball, with our partners, SRC. Rawson House is another good partner who does vetting, you know, what places where we could help like vet, or even like home care, using the police department to be able to say, you know, these are people who get vetted through, you know, good sources to make sure that, you know, we're not only providing access, but also quality and safety. Because those are both two demographics that are too often victimized, so.
Would you, would you mind taking, Councillor Mon, turning back to page four? I'm looking at 1.5.2 and 1.5.3. Those specifically speak to senior family policies and older adults and see if that captures?
If it, if you, that's fine, I just wanna make sure that those are both in there in that way that you're, you know, that it's about the partnerships and us removing the barriers that we control.
I think it absolutely, and actually we call out barriers to accessing, so we call that out specifically.
Perfect.
So I would feel staff would be comfortable with that flexibility in the speaking for the seniors, if that means your needs.
It does, I think it was more in terms of, I feel like you hit it better on the senior side than on the child side as far as what Councillor Izadi wanted.
Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you for the questions and for the interest. And if I could actually, on the note on childcare, I brought some printed copies, if you want to share with any constituents. I know we're certainly concerned, we will send you the electronic version of those, but that's just one example. You know, one of our philosophies, my philosophy, no need to reinvent the wheel. If you've got good partners, strong partners, who are already doing the work, who are focused in that area, we really just wanna put our support behind them. So this is just one example in one area. So this is the SPDC, one of our longtime partners, partnering with them. Councillor Ireland, you had mentioned about Shelby Goods and teaching that class. She's our main conduit to the SPDC and has worked with them to develop this childcare class and our promotion of that to a small business community and entrepreneurial community. So that's just one example. And Councillor Demond, as you had mentioned about the Senior Resource Center and also doing that. So since we are engaged in a lot of, putting deals together, working with businesses, the intersection of nonprofits and community services, we are constantly have our antennas up for how we can leverage our strong partners. We will continue to do that.
I appreciate that. And on the note of the partners, this may be something to pass by the chamber, because it would be totally voluntary. But I saw my sister-in-law in Minnesota shared that there is a business community up there that is starting to realize with kids out of school and that not all of them. I know that we've done pretty well with some of the access to food and lunches for the kiddos that normally get the free and reduced. That's a great opportunity for businesses. And so the call-out was that there are businesses, like pizza places, that'll give a slice of pizza to kids and stuff that are out for the summer. So that may be an opportunity, especially in our downtown area, where people can walk to things. So just a thought.
Thank you. Okay, are we good?
So is City Council comfortable with the revised wording that Councillor Izadi proposed?
I think as long as it doesn't like narrow us into certain solutions, yeah. Because you offered something, I just don't want us to feel like that's inclusive of everything.
There might be other things, ideas that other people have, so. So I want it to be flexible.
Okay, we will make that change, ready?
Yep. Can I ask when we're going to, later this year? When we, we'll see some options? What we can do?
In?
For a strategy, for this objective?
Specifically for childcare? I don't wanna speak for Director Kimball, but this would be something that we would build into our 2026 budget if dollars aren't already allocated to the city, unless there's available dollars to be able to.
Yeah, and I also wanna just clarify to you, when Erin and I talked about this earlier, and she's been great incorporating that. But I also wanna make sure I don't speak for partners with PRL who are doing the actual childcare at childcare facilities. I noticed that that language is also in the suggested wording there, so I don't wanna speak for them. But definitely from training, capacity building, partnerships, you know, we had mentioned about the recently approved and discussed in December of this year, the Affordable Senior Project in our downtown, that they have reserved at our request, two, 3,000 square feet of community space. And that, you know, we are talking to various partners, both for young childcare and adult care and some combos maybe of those, to put into that community space. So that's just an example of how, you know, I feel like community services, how we can help push this. But I don't, I just don't wanna misrepresent, it's not all community services, so.
And may I make sure that we answer your question, councillor? So what happens once all of these edits are made? The strategic plan revision becomes final and a living, real document in real time, which means that we will run the rest of 2025 according to this plan as amended by City Council. So already, most of it is in place. Any of the edits already made, we've already started to look at and as you heard from Director Kimball, act on already with respect to childcare specifically. And we'll continue to do that this year as we begin this work, which is develop a comprehensive strategy. At the same time, all existing resources, turning over stones, we will get done what we can with existing resources beyond. If there is anything, and I'm not even saying that there would be, if there's anything additional required from us, we'll let you know early enough that those allocations could be made. Or as City Manager, I can direct some reallocations as I have been on vacant staff positions, for example. So we will find ways to do everything we can, once this becomes the final strategic plan for us. And then anything subsequent to that, we'll report back on. Does that make sense?
And I clearly heard Director Otzelberger mention that they're at capacity. They're doing everything they can do.
Yeah, and hopefully now that it's clear what the, this is not about our rec centers. It's much bigger than that. So I'm curious what the results will be, what from the research.
And if I'm not mistaken, councillor, that you, there's some community contacts that we can involve in these discussions earlier rather than later. And you can, you know, if you haven't already, you can share those with us and we can follow up directly with those individuals. Because I think that they've done some good work ahead of time, thinking this through a bit.
And you've met, we've met with her?
Okay.
Thank you for the clarifications and additional revisions. Turning the page to 4.1.
Actually, this is an area that I, I think I brought up offline with our, with the meeting and planning at some point. But is this where we could possibly include partnering with either school districts in terms of buildings, or even neighboring cities occasionally, in terms of buildings and infrastructure? Because this is where I think we could get a little creative with our dollars. Because this is where it says, explore alternative funding strategies for infrastructure. And I think that every now and then, we might have possibilities for buildings, especially with our schools, if we talk to them, the school districts. Not only just buildings, but other resources.
The areas that we need, there are specific areas that we need fire stations, and those areas don't have schools.
I'm not specifically talking about fire for this.
Oh, I thought you were talking about 4.41? 4.4.1? Is that what we're talking about? Help me out.
Yes, explore alternative strategies for infrastructure, considering options that include sponsorship, naming, and public-private partnerships.
Right.
So that's not just about fire?
No, that would be all infrastructure.
Infrastructure, right.
Oh, okay, I was confused, never mind. I was, I was, I was confused, sorry. Excuse me.
No, but I'm just wondering, and we don't have to do this now, but I've brought this up a few times, are there ways we could be creative in the future with our resources? Especially, I know we're doing a whole asset inventory discussion, et cetera, right now. But could we, in the future, partner, could we include our school districts, for example? If they have, all of a sudden, a building becomes free, you know? We could leverage that, or I think we mentioned Broomfield.
Shorting green?
Well, and we mentioned Broomfield sits on a border where there might be a building that we've talked about leveraging, you know, jointly.
Building upon that, would you consider the modification of, explore alternative funding strategies for infrastructure, considering options that include but are not limited to?
Sure.
So then that would allow potentially a broader partnership or consideration? And not necessarily focusing on sponsorship, naming?
Right. And I'm not saying there's things now, but I just hope we can be creative in the future.
Something to keep our eyes open to?
Exactly.
So we're turning two pages, beginning our, starting with the strategic priority five, resilient infrastructure. 5.1.11? We're done that tonight. I was hoping you weren't gonna strike yet. Our last one is 5.5.1.
How often is this cost of, it just says, complete a cost of service study. Is this because we need one? Clearly we must. So how often do we need one?
We can, we can.
Last one was done 2016, 15, 16?
Yeah, I think best practices is something less than 10 years. We're pushing 10 years now.
Okay.
This may not be entirely accurate, but I believe the best practice is at least seven years, every seven years. But we got into some of our own restructuring, so that we did over the last couple of years. And now we're ready. And this is what I updated us on tonight, and speaking to Councillor Izadi's points earlier, this is a living strategic plan for us now. So we're already working on these things based on your earlier direction.
I think it's important that we do it. But I also think it's important in the lens of what we do it and how we try to approach it. Because the last one, what kicked off a lot of upheaval in this community for about a decade. So I just wanna make sure, you know, that, yeah, we need to understand it, but we also need to understand it holistically. And what is, you know, just because, oh, well, we're short this much, so we should increase it 9% and go off of a study that clearly didn't work out very well for us. So I wanna just make sure that we remember our last decade while we go down that path again.
Make a tier over a tier.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And that's awareness that staff considers in our conversations and as we start these conversations with Bractellus, who is our consultant, as we start to navigate it, not just what the plan is and they implement, it's understanding the plan and then figuring out, similar to tonight, what those gaps are and how we bridge them. It's not an all or nothing, but maybe we start to phase it in or modify it. But until we complete that, the initial groundwork?
And I'm confident that we will. And I, you know, I'll reiterate the fact that under Manager Andrews' leadership, both as an interim and as the permanent City Manager, I've seen you do that, where you're figuring out ways that we can cover part of the gap with what we already have. And that's what I think the community would expect.
Councillor Ireland?
So the consultant we're using, the same one we used nine years ago?
That, the same consultant, Bractellus, yes, was. That, the same consultant, Raptalis, yes, was selected through a competitive bid process, through a competitive RFP process. And that was the consultant that was selected based upon their expertise with, with water and utility financing, so. They're the top in the state.
To address Councilor Ireland's question, though, or maybe a part of it is, so we have a completely different city council and leadership team. And this is a consultant that's working for us. Only city council can adjust the water rates in the city. And, and only staff can recommend to you recommendations. It wouldn't come from the consultant. So the consultant will, will do the work. There's a lot of data mining in here. That's why it's a two-year project. There's a lot of looking at every water pipe, every bolt, every nut, when, what our, what our parameters are for when we replace things, when we, when they reach end of life and that sort of thing. So that's all work that will be done for, at the staff level. And then staff will bring forward any appropriate recommendations to city council with options. And my commitment to you is to communicate very regularly on these matters. That's why, that's why you had the agenda memo tonight on this, which was a general memo, but it was to signal to you that the work has started. And then it's, it's going to be, you'll, city council will be in the driver's seat on water rates.
May I, Jim?
That just reminded me of a question I had on that memo, sorry. The, for what we will be analyzing, I've heard that we are using less water, for example, on some of our downtown developments than we had anticipated. And I'm just curious to know, in this, I know it's a cost of service study, but would some of that data be analyzed? So we can better understand what the actual use is per certain types of uses?
That will all be part of the, of the work. And you're right, the downtown has delivered under budget on the water budget. And so that's, and we'll be looking, we know why that is. The development and the developers, the builders, and the people buying or renting the units are expecting high-efficiency fixtures and lower water use. And by going to LEED Silver Certification, we automatically build it. A resident doesn't move into the downtown and make any choices, and they automatically use less water than a typical Westminster resident, because the building is designed differently. And, and it doesn't make a difference to them, and then they could make further choices. So that data will be mined, and we'll, we'll understand how much that yield has been and whether that can be extended to others. I would give a lot of credit to the private sector on this, that the, the production of water-efficient features and the quality of those features has been increasing a lot over the last half a decade. And we're seeing that show up now in our water use numbers, dropping through consumption, through conservation automatically. And that's not something that the city regulated. That's something that came from the industry side. And so that's, it's really been a symbiotic, coming together both of those in the downtown, for sure. Because it is new, right? It's a new development with those new features. But that data will be in, in this work.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to talk about, since we've went through these, I noticed that we do have one area that I've talked about in the past missing, which is accessibility in new housing units. So I'm wondering, we do specifically call out diverse housing options, and we do specifically call out housing for seniors. But I'm wondering if we could make a 1.4.3? If I can get support on this. And we're not asking for numbers or percentage, but if we say, "Promote and support housing with ADA accessibility in new developments." And, one second, I'll just say, obviously, we have to ask and developers have to come to us for that. But that also supports seniors, of course, having ADA access of new developments. But it supports folks of all ages who might need it.
Councilor D'Amont?
I thought in a lot of current stuff, there's a lot of requirements around what's required for ADA. Especially in multifamily and senior.
On the state level, we want ones.
ADA. ADA, are you able to talk about ADA requirements in your current?
So we uphold all of the federal requirements for ADA compliance, of course, and those are adopted in the building code. But I know, you know, I have, Councilor Emily, I've heard you say, you know, you were interested in something actually in addition to those ADA requirements? And perhaps using a carrot, or as you said, a recommendation, some assistance with perhaps already building those accommodations within maybe a certain percentage of units within those developments?
Precisely.
Blessings.
Because we might be following ADA, but how many of them are for folks in wheelchairs? Or for folks under a certain height? And, and so I, it's, folks have to search, you know, an hour, two hours away to get a house that they can live in. So I'm hoping for a percentage one day. I think that's a lot maybe to ask now, but even just adding the language to say, "To promote and encourage specific accessible units", we'd be setting a precedent that we need across the front range.
Yeah, I definitely think we can do that. We can work with developers as they come in. And in particular, I just wanted to mention and call out this body recently approved project with Maker Housing on federal and around federal and ADA 84. To provide some units are set aside for folks with disabilities. So that's, I think, a good example. It's, it's the first one that we've worked on, you know, in, I think in, well, at least in my time here at the city. But we can certainly work with developers who are creating projects and inquiring about the addition of those units.
Amazing. That's good to hear about that project.
Maker has two of them framed. Very good. Would you be comfortable if staff takes a moment outside of this to craft a 4.1.4.3 that captures promoting and supporting accessibility in units? So that we make sure it's thoughtful based upon our, our building, our building chief? Would you be comfortable with that?
Absolutely. Other counselors, okay?
Okay. So to recap, thank you, Juan. Thank you again for your time. We have three revisions that we, or four total revisions that we have agreed upon. One is, this last one would be adding 1.4.3, something along the lines of promoting, supporting accessibility for units. wording to be refined based upon staffing's recommendation. The next one is 2.3.3 in regards to welcoming resources for new residents to include a revision that other, not only city services, but other related services within the counties or neighboring jurisdictions. The next one is 4.1.10, which is related to childcare, incorporating Councilor Zadi's wording as he proposed in his email. And then the last one would be 4.4.1, related to exploring alternative funding strategies to include but not limited to sponsorship, naming, and private, public-private partnerships. So those are the four revisions.
4.4.1.
Yeah, sorry, 4.4.1.
I see no hands.
So we will make those revisions and we will, are you, are you comfortable with us incorporating them and moving forward? We don't adopt, we are keeping our visions, mission, guiding principles, and strategic priorities the same. Those are, that is what we adopt. The policy and operational objectives, the fluid components, we don't adopt those. Are you comfortable if we make those decisions, those revisions and begin to move forward?
Go for it.
Okay.
And what I can commit to is with Erin's help, I'll get you an information memo that will attach the finalized version of this plan.
And then after you've seen that, we will update our website, Strategic Plan. You can find it underneath the city council's webpages. We'll make sure that that final version is there as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. It's 9:24, and we are adjourned.
Erin.
Yes.